...up until like two, a little bit two years ago, the building has that built up. So whenever something like that happens that will add an end to a different zoning, it reverts to the current code. With that being said, they have made an application for conditional use to operate again as an event center and in one which is like in Douglas. Staff's report is we would be in favor of supporting that if that is where in common because it's not operated as that same type facility in that time. So that is why they're asking for conditional use on all that, if you all are in favor of having any questions with that, you know, the first period is done.
Mr. City Manager?
I discussed this with Ebony, I don't know if I discussed it with Jordan or maybe. The appropriate remedy would be a variance, not a conditional use. Conditional use goes on and on and on, a variance only goes to that one person for that one time. So I would recommend that you just grant a variance, which is what you have done on these similar matters in the past. So it would be a variance opposed to a conditional use.
So with the variance, do we still have to have a public hearing? Okay.
You do, and also as a part of this, staff was thinking that if the property sells and someone else decides to still operate as an event center there, which is another reason why we're asking for conditioning that continues on if the next person decides to still operate as an event center. Normally when we do variance, it's for heights and density and things like that. But this in this case has brought me chose to conditional use.
But if a new buyer comes in, they can also come down here and ask for a variance.
Well, to keep that in hand, we go as well to protect the conditional use for the next owner to continue operating as an event center.
But because it violates the zone, it's not compatible with the zone, I would think that you all, if you want to preserve the right, look at each one when they take back their basis and prove it as it comes up.
All right.
But when they already the grant filed it in, before, were you certain?
No, when they, they lose utilities, it reverts back.
Right, so if we operate before we run our unitile limit, they'll be called a challenge and so on.
So.
So it was allowed to continue.
Right.
Okay, so basically, lead us through this, what do we need, we need to do a variance?
We need to do a variance.
We need to do a variance.
And then if they sell it, the next person can come down here and ask for a variance also.
So what do we have to do tonight if we're going to go from a conditional use to a variance?
Do you need a grant to Sonia Young McPray, a seven six East Railroad Street, a variance?
Okay. Cool, yes.
What constitutes, or what kind of events can, can they pull off in an event center? Is there a definition for an event center, or as to what type of events can actually be had?
Yes, sir, similar to like such as square complex and any place that you can rent a foundation, wedding reception, parties, but did give the sorts of events.
I mean, the, so what do we need to do, because thi- this has been an event center since eighteen twelve.
We just say a ten-four is in.
Yeah.
Carry it forward and vote it down my list.
Okay. Uh, excuse me, you still have your hand up?
Well, no.
No, go ahead.
He just answered my question, what do, what do we need to do to move forward?
Mr. Taylor, you have any other questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Bailey, you're good, you're good. Mayor Protip? Mr. Paul, are you okay?
I'm good.
Mr. Dur.
I just got a question with variance, the variance, it'll, it'll fit everything that he needs.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
To do, to run and operate the way he thinks too.
Absolutely. You're good?
I mean, say like for example, if he, I mean, with an event center, he could go forward with the nickelizes and stuff like that and, you know, he can, in that variance, he can still do that in that variance.
He'll get a special event permit.
Okay.
Right, because an event center operator, he can apply for special minutes out of all that.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So we're gonna carry that forward and we're gonna vote on that during the lights. Mr. City Manager, next item, please.
Next item, item four, final page thirty-eight, discussing the perjury of annexation of all the funds annexed for ninety-eight point forty-eight acres of vacant, um, parcel located off of Indian Wood Road, uh, Clinton Murray Road and L G P, uh, L G Post Road. This is all city and Douglas property.
I'm sorry, I didn't mark that one in my book, but as the city manager said, all of this property belonging to the city of Douglas is in the county and we desire to annex it in, so we will be within the city of Douglas.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Well, you gotta take it forward.
Okay, take it forward.
Okay, okay. Carry it forward. Ms. McNeil, Mayor Protip?
Take it forward.
Mr. Paul?
Carry it forward.
Mr. Dur?
Carry it forward.
Thank you.
We won't go on.
Next item?
Next item, item five, final page fifty-five, discuss tech woods supplemental agreement phase nine, ten, and eleven, transportation alternative program, also known as TAP grant, according.
All right, we have an existing grant, um, the TAP grant, um, we have to do a supplemental agreement for each phase of this grant. This phase is for the environmental services utility coordination and engineering design, total of two hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred sixteen dollars. So we need approval from mayor to execute the supplemental agreement for this.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Ms. Bailey, consent, Ms. McNeil? Mayor Protip?
Consent.
Mr. Paul?
Consent.
Mr. Dur?
Consent.
Thank you, next item?
Item six, final page sixty-two, discuss supplemental agreements, transportation alternative program, five framework agreement, according.
And we could have fit this in one of the general items, but they prefer it be separated this way. This is for the funding, we did receive an additional two hundred thousand dollars for this, um, next phase of the project. Um, it'll be an eighty, um, twenty match with the city match coming out of, um, the general plan flying out.
Mr. Taylor, lead us through it?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil? Mayor Protip?
Consent.
Mr. Paul?
Consent.
Mr. Dur?
Consent.
Thank you, next item, Mr. City Manager?
All right, next item, item seven, final page sixty-nine, discuss adoption to the G M A for stated, um, defined benefit retirement plan. Um, occasionally in the public this, but occasioned I R S pays reviews to the plan that G M A has to redo. And we done this back in two thousand nineteen, and I R S has been doing it a couple more times, reviews to the plans that came here to discuss.
But good afternoon, Mayor Commission.
Good afternoon.
And what it is, is I R S did issue a favorable tenure letter for the amended and stated, um, G M A's defined, um, benefit retirement plan. And in the plan, um, it incorporates required federal law updates as well as administrative updates, adopt about board trustees for G M A. And the I R S required them to each adoptee reporter to, um, sign an updated D, the defined, um, benefit plan adoption agreement. So I just stand before tonight seeking approval to adopt these updated amid, um, G M A's defined benefit plan.
Okay, Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir.
Lead us through it.
Thank you, uh, tenure and I've always thought that was newer, and this is a really a formality, and, um, I'd say we've done this before with different occasions, so, I'm, um, in favor of putting on the consent agenda.
Consent.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protip?
Consent.
Mr. Paul?
Consent.
Mr. Dur?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. City Manager, next item?
Next is item eight, um, final page one nineteen, discuss a not to exceed price for purchase of three vehicles, my pleasure. Thank you, Mr. Davis, good evening, Mayor Commission. Um, as Mr. Bailey stated, we're looking to, uh, get a not to exceed price to purchase three vehicles, one in the Public Works Department, which will replace a wreck vehicle, one in the Animal Control Department that is also replacing a wreck vehicle for thirty thousand, not to exceed, and then a vehicle for the airport for a not to exceed price of eighteen thousand dollars. So that'll be the free vehicle we'd be asking, and the reason we're doing this every time Terry and him find a truck, by the time we come back and try to get you guys the free vehicle truck's gone. So that's what we're going into here later with purchasing vehicles.
Happy.
All right, that is, Mr. Bailey, lead us through it.
Um, consent, so, Mike and I talked about this last week.
Good deal, Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil? Mayor Protip?
Consent.
Mr. Paul?
Consent.
Mr. Dur?
Consent.
Good deal, thank you guys, next item?
There are no general comments and there are no updates.
Good deal.
All right.
So, we're gonna hold fast, we're gonna adjourn the work session, we're gonna go right into our regular meeting, okay? All hearts and minds clear, you good with that, Mr. Dur?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Paul?
I'm good.
Mayor Protip?
Good.
Ms. McNeil? Mr. Bailey shaking his head? Good deal, all right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas Mayor Commission, this will serve as the regular meeting for the Mayor and Commission for May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And tonight, our invocation will be from Minister Tonja Simpson. Tonja, Ms. Simpson is a good friend of mine, she's coming here to lead us through it.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So kindly please, Father God, oh gracious Father, we first and foremost, we want to thank you for this day, Father God. We thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us, we thank you for your protection, even now, as the weather is bad, Father God, you have lighted up us and kept us, Father God. And Father God, we ask for your wisdom as we begin this meeting, we acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insight as we welcome your presence among us, guide us in our decisions and, uh, discussions as we go forth, help us to seek what is best for all who are involved. We trust in your perfect wisdom and ask that you direct our meeting according to your will, oh Father God. For in James one five, it says, "If any of you lack wisdom, let him ask God, who gives truthfully to all without a pope, and it will be given to him." So Father God, we claim that promise tonight as we start this meeting and we trust your provision and we thank you right now for all that you do during this meeting. It's in your presence, son, please change your prayers.
Amen, thank you. Next on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance, if you would, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is safe, one nation without a doubt, indivisible, and infinite, and just as your God.
Good deal, you may proceed it. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the order of the agenda.
Come on.
Second, it's been motioned in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Outstanding, next item on the agenda is to recognize our state champion track. And as always, we gonna have the dynamic, the dynamic, Stevie, go get him young, in the Hall of Fame for football for the state of Georgia, right row.
Come on, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you're at the Hall of Fame?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
There you go.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Good evening, good afternoon, uh, everyone, again, uh, thank everyone for supporting our program, this is, uh, against testimony, testimony, the testimony of what we're doing in parks and recreation, whether it's basketball, softball, uh, tennis, golf, uh, swim, you name it, we've been successful. But today, we have Ms. Keller, I want to mention if I'm not saying correctly, Ms. Keller Smith, uh, the parents are here, uh, and we had a local state, Keller won the sixteen hundred meter G R P A state champ, state championship meet, maybe three weeks ago, at E, at East Jackson High School, which is in Jackson County, Commerce, Georgia. Uh, uh, dominant, actually, you know, a, a great performance, and we had Ms. Malia Jackson, Ryan Bullock's granddaughter, she won the softball tallies and javelin. Uh, she's had a state record in the javelin tallies, so we do have young, uh, participants in our program that's representing Douglas County quite well. And I just want to, Ms. Keller, opportunity to get some photo shots of the mayor and our DAs on, and I know we appreciate your great job, how you represent us, it's your fault, everybody. Ms. McNeil.
Here we go.
Stay gentle, boy, look, I'm just telling y'all, we can't do this.
Thank you.
His matas, right? Tell her that to his street.
Do we want to cheer you? You wanna come? You wanna come up? We can cheer with balls here. Good deal. Hold on, before you go, say something, say something about this young lady, put your mic right on. Say something about this young lady.
Well, I, I know her parents here in Douglas, she's family, I mean, just like, and, oh, gosh, granddaddy's nervous, so very, very proud of this lady, very hard on her shirt, her knees. Looks like she's got enough in little there.
Yeah, that's the boss.
Chili.
Future tracks on, doesn't call you, don't be adding.
So, as always, uh, I tell folks this all the time, the greatest ambassadors to our community is our youth. We were not in Commerce when she was competing, but she had on our coach, she had the, uh, Douglas County, uh, Parks and Recreation name, um, that gets introduced. Not Maritoni Hall or the Commission, this young lady and, uh, Mr. Bullock's granddaughter and numerous of other individuals that went up there to compete. They carried that banner for the city of Douglas and Coffee County, and we're always indebted to our youth. And that's why I always pressure the, uh, city manager to let's spend more money on our parks and recreation. We spent twenty-five million bucks jail, I'm doing everything we can to keep them out of eight twenty-five Thompson Drive. So, we're gonna continue to support our youth and we're gonna continue to be state champions, we just want to say thank you, what was your time?
Um, three, two. We can't lie, because Lori knows.
You know, I used to write this, this myself.
Now that'd be a match, don't you think?
Oh.
I love it.
Y'all handed no more, I write, yeah, my fastest time running the mile was like four fifty. Uh, the fastest time for running the two miles was like nine, nine oh five, nine oh six, so, but that was in the military. So, uh, hey, I tell you a secret, running, swimming, both ways, it was grabbing on both weights to make your legs strong. Thank you very much, y'all have a good day, God bless. And they're gonna do an exit letter.
Here's your agenda, that's just a souvenir for us, okay? Yes.
Good deal, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda items, as always, we will have the city manager to lead us through that for transparency, Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, I was only stating, I thought your fastest time was when the blue lights were chasing me, but he was right.
All right, peaches. Right, don't start nothing, it won't be nothing, okay?
All right. Right, I'll update my story, I had that wrong. All right, we have six items coming over, consent agenda, and I read them all back stage for transparency purposes, the first item is item one, approval of April twenty-second, twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, we need to be in it. Next item was approval of the special bench application for Mr. Tate Carter, nineties cookout, there on May twenty-sixth, uh, twenty twenty-four at the Hall Plaza. Next item, item five, approval of tech woods supplemental agreement for phase nine, ten, and eleven for the transportation alternative program. Next item, item six, approval of supplemental agreement to the transportation alternative program, project framework agreement. The next item was approval, uh, item seven, approval of adoption of G M A's restated defined benefit retirement plan. And item eight, uh, approval, uh, not to exceed price for purchase of three vehicles, three dry.
Thank you very much, at this time, I entertain a motion for the items based on the consent agenda.
Come on.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is work session items brought forward for discussion or questioning. Mr. City Manager, I do believe we have a couple items.
Mayor, we have two items coming over, um, from the work session, the first item will be item three, discussing how the public hearing of the variance request for Reginald McPray and Sonia Young McPray for, parcel D zero two, one zero three four, uh, seven sixty East Railroad Street.
All right, I'll do it, anyway, I'll do it. Uh, this is a request for a variance, property located at seven oh six East Railroad Street, Douglas, Georgia. The present zoning is light industrial, M one, uh, the use is a, uh, event center, and the owners of that, uh, Mr. Reginald McPray and Sonia Brooks Young, are requesting a variance so that they can operate an event center at this location. Now, prior to you taking action on that, I'll open a public hearing for anyone here tonight who wishes to make a pu, make a public comment on the proposed variance, seven sixty East Railroad Street, or an event center, anybody here who wishes to make a comment on that. Apparently, there's no one here, Mr. Mayor, and it's Red Throat.
At this time, I entertain a motion.
Come on.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, any further discussion?
And this would be for a variance, correct?
Correct.
Not a condition.
Correct. It's been motioned in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, next item?
All right, next item, item four, from the work session, discussing adoption of the perjury of annexation of all the funds annexed for ninety-eight point forty-eight acres of vacant lot, parcel, A located off of Indian Wood Road, Clinton Murray Road, and L G P Post Road.
All right, this is an annexation order, suggested background, over the last several years, the city of Douglas has acquired several tracts of land on the south end of the airport, had requested the FAA to keep the approach end of the runway clear, and it all totaled up to ninety-eight point forty-eight acres, although the city owns that property, has never been annexed into the city. So this order should annex that property into the city limits, this will be the first meeting, you don't take any acts in the night, the next meeting will have the second reading, any public hearings. It will be by the Mayor and Commission, the city of Douglas, Georgia, hereby ordained by authority, same, from, and after effect, today, this order, the following script, here continues to the city of Douglas, Georgia, hereby annexed into, made a part of city of Douglas, and applicable to the owners, ninety-eight point forty-eight acres, also referenced, first time at a regular meeting, Mayor Board of Commissioners, city of Douglas, Georgia, on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and we'll have a second meeting on May twenty-eighth.
Good deal. Thank you. Good?
Yes, sir.
Any staff comment?
So, uh, the commander of, uh, American Legion Post five fifteen, uh, Jerome Loving is not here, he asked me to read this, uh, for him. He normally comes before us to keep us abreast of what's going on, uh, in the military community. So basically, it says, Post five fifteen will conduct a Memorial Day service at the Coffee County Courthouse at twelve P M, Monday, May twenty-seventh. Also, the public is invited to help ceremoniously dispose of over five hundred unserviceable flags, and making them ready for Flag Day in June, and hopefully have bright red, white, and blue flags on June fourteenth, which is Flag Day, and also the Fourth of July. On Memorial Day, we remember deceased veterans all over the world, especially.
On Memorial Day, we remember deceased veterans all over the world, especially the eighty-seventh heroes on the monument at the Coffee County Courthouse, military and city of Douglas Coffee County, it first responders, who gave their lives defending freedom and democracy around the world and protecting our city. As I said, uh, Mr. Loving is always here to keep us abreast of that, so just wanted to make sure that he did get that out, he's on vacation up in New York. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
It's been motioned in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, we stand adjourned.